Call the City of Panama City Planning Board Meeting of July 11th to order. And I will remind everyone today, we make recommendations to the city commission. So whatever we vote on today, unless it's a variance, and I don't believe we have any variances today, will be heard at the city commission meeting. They make the final decision. We accept, we make recommendations to them, and they do take those into consideration when they, when they do their votes, their discussions. The items we go over today, the first reading will be on August the 9th at 8:00 AM at City Hall, and not at City Hall, at the county commission building, at the, where they hold all on 11th Street, I believe it's eight, what, eight eleven, eight oh four, something like that.
Eight forty.
Eight forty, eleven. Eight o'clock on August 9th, that's first readings. Typically, they don't take discussions during those meetings, but if you're there and you're insistent, they will. The second reading, where they would take the final reading on the vote, is August 23rd at 8:00 AM at same location, at the county complex, 11th Street. So again, we make recommendations to them. Kind of give you, before I call the roll, give you an idea, I know some of you, this is your first time here, as a lady mentioned that. You will get a chance to speak. If you want to speak, you'll get a chance to speak today. I will encourage you to be civil when you speak. Sometimes people get carried away, I understand that, I do myself. But I will ask you to state your name and your address each time you come up to the mic, and that will be for the record. These records are, the meeting is recorded and transcribed, not transcribed, so please state your name and order. Typically, what we'll do is the staff will do their presentation, the board will ask them any questions we may have. We will give the audience members then a chance to speak, ask, you can make, ask questions and all that, but we're not going to get into a debate back and forth on this stuff. The applicant or the owner will have a chance to respond to your questions. We used to have them first, and then we found it's easier to let the questions get out on the table first, and then let them come up and try to address you. All right, with that, we called it to order. Is there, who's taking notes? Okay, great. Are there, do we do the roll call? So usually, the notetaker does the roll call. We have a new notetaker, by the way.
Sharon, did you get it?
Here. Here. Here, that's fine, here.
Mr. Barker?
Okay, here.
Mr. Stantz?
Here.
Mr. Dubuque?
Here.
Mr. Crosby?
Here.
Richard LeBauer?
Yeah, he took my cellphone last meeting, and I was trying to take mine.
Trying to keep it straight, young man.
All right, very good. Are there any changes or deletions or additions to the agenda? Staff?
Yes, I did want to state for the record, it was confirmed that the Sweet Bay Apartments Phase Two will need to go before the city commission, that will move forward on July 26th. The rest of the items will move forward on the August dates, so just everyone is aware.
Okay, so item number one will go to July 26th. All right, very good. We would like to welcome Michael Fuller, he's our new city planner. Mike Lane left.
March.
April.
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 Mike who, right? Yeah, but welcome, and we're glad you're, glad you're with us.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here, really excited to be here. Mike, bless you, nice shoes are built, but got my best.
Thank you.
I just had one other one on the, on the items. On request two, it's a type of application and rezoning. It's also a small scale land use, and rezone. But we have that one changed.
Okay, very good, so no, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we have several minutes that were previously provided. And the first one is the minutes of January 10th, 2022. Do I have a motion, are there any changes or additions to that? Have a motion to accept?
Second.
And a second. Okay, if there's no further discussion, please take the roll. We didn't know we were going to put you to work that much, right? You get to take the roll, we've done.
I apologize.
And just to remind you, chairman votes last.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, the next one of the minutes of February 14th, 2022, is there any discussion on those? If not, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion to accept and a second, there's no further discussion, additions, changes, please take the roll.
Board member Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. One more set of minutes, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. April, minutes of April the 11th, 2022. Any discussion on those? Not, do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion to accept and a second, there's no changes or additions or discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. One more set of minutes, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. April, minutes of April the 11th, 2022. Any discussion on those? Not, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion to accept and a second, there's no further discussion, changes or additions, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, great, we are done with all catching up on the minutes, I appreciate the hard work that was done to get us up to speed for this year. I already talked about announcements or disclosures of Mr. Fuller's arrival, if there's nothing else, we will move on. All right, request number one.
Request one, request one is a request for approval of Sweet Bay Apartments Phase Two project conceptual plan.
All right, the staff have any questions or on this particular conceptual plan? I have one for the applicant, I know the applicant representative's here, she'll come up and jizz. These are going just east of the existing apartments, is that the?
Correct, so it's the outlined area with the leader highlighted, there should have been a, an architectural site plan that was provided that has a little more detail, is it there? Okay.
It's just kind of easy. The extension of Lisbon, is that? Stanford, is that going to go straight across into their permanent?
Yeah, if you can, um.
I know that looks like a nice entrance road y'all had developed going in there, that straight across.
Right, so the, the road along that Stanford will continue all the way down to the marina. And so what's going to happen is on this project, there are stormwater ponds in the center, powered for a local park, so there'll be crossroads that come across to a side street to access the west side of this space.
So Stanford will pretty much be straight through, now would you be able to cross 390 on Stanford?
No, DOT has plans, that's not going to be on through access.
Okay, it's just temporary, then they, they.
Correct. Yeah, there's like some sort of median constriction that will not allow you to cross stretch over.
I think I might have asked you that some of the last times, but.
Yeah.
No problem, you're going to ask it. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for that? Seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve in a second, if there's no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. LeBauer? Oops. Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Very good. All right, request number two.
Request two is 3027 James Avenue for annexation, small land use amendment, and rezoning.
Okay, and it's residential county to residential city, the change on that. Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience to address this item? Oh, one to address this item, is there anyone, is the applicant here or representative?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you, sir. I keep forgetting about the TV back there. Thank you. You're the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. If we have a question, we'll get you to state your name and address for the record.
Very well.
Any questions for that? There's no one in the audience to speak to it. Okay, do I have a motion? Have a motion to approve and a second, if there's no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you, thank you, sir, on, on the Zoom call.
You're welcome.
Okay, request number three.
Request number three is request for annexation, land use change, and rezoning of approximately 0.17 acres from residential one R1 Bay County to residential one R1 Panama City at 1118 Bay Avenue. Christopher Birch is the owner, and Mike Mosley is the applicant.
Okay, thank you, and from what I understand, looking at the property records, this is a habitat for humanity, location, I believe, they, they're shown as a property on official records. Okay, any questions from staff? Anyone in the audience to address this? Seeing none, the applicant, is the applicant here? Either one of them? Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Excuse me, can I make a question? Got it, thank you.
All right, very good, a motion in seconds, no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, number four.
Request four is a request for annexation, land use change, and rezoning of 7.34 acres approximately from residential one R1 Bay County, and general commercial C2 Bay County to urban residential two UR2 Panama City, located at 1218 College Avenue. City of Panama City is the owner, and Michael Johnson is the area, is the applicant.
Okay, questions from the board? I know this, and the next item is the area right below this, which is total about 37 acres, so this is a fairly large tract that you're, is looking at. Is Mr. Johnson here? Anyone coming?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm on the line.
Thank you, sir, just in case some questions come up on this.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience to address this item? Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Derek Thomas, 1100 West End Street, I was just wondering, what is the difference in the density from urban, from residential to urban residential? Because it looks like it's all woods right now, I don't know how many more houses they're putting into that small area, thank you.
Can you state your name again for the record?
Derek Thomas, 1100 West End Street.
Thank you.
Okay, someone on staff want to answer that, or would you like to look it up?
Staff can answer it, so we're looking at gross for UR2, we're looking at gross 31 units per acre.
How many?
Thirty.
Per acre?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's 35 acres?
This item is about 7.34, and the next item is about 29.69, so yes, total. That's gross, but.
Yeah, that's available.
Yeah. Yes, so that, that is rough and massive density on both parcels.
You read my mind.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Lane, and I live at 203 College Avenue, and I'm curious, what is the city going to do with those 100 units? What type of units will it be?
So the units that we plan to build there are either townhouses or duplexes, as you know, there's a huge need for workforce housing, and so that is the intent of the city. Now, the adjacent property that's heavily wooded, as you know, a lot of that is wetlands, so we will not be able to build on that portion, but we're going to use as much of the parcels that we can to build townhouses or duplexes.
Workforce housing, we've heard that before in, in our area. Yeah, we're against it.
And what was your address again, ma'am?
203 College Avenue.
I just made notes on my sheet, put things together. Anyone else here to ask questions about this particular item? Okay, seeing none, additional questions from the board? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve in seconds, no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, item number five, as I mentioned, is the piece directly below that and just north of the apartment seven there now, and like Mr. Johnson mentioned, a lot of that is wetlands, which isn't really being discerned from just item five. Any other, any questions on this side? Sam, I'm assuming you're, I think you have someone coming up.
It's not somebody, it's.
I was going to say, I'm assuming you're opposed to this one.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Kevin, Kevin Land, 203 College Avenue. Since the 29 acres is mostly underwater, what is the plans to demuck it? Because obviously, they're wanting to use it to build workforce houses, even though we don't have workforce.
Our intent, our intent is to use only the upland portion of it, we will not demuck the wetland area, that could be later used to mitigate for some other projects, but currently, we have no plans to do anything with the wetlands.
So there's no building going to go onto it?
Onto the wetlands?
Not on the wetland portion, no, sir.
Not on the wetland part?
Okay, so what is the percentage of wetlands on the 29 acres?
Unfortunately, I don't have that documentation here in front of me, because I took ill, and that's why I'm not there today, but I can certainly get you that information.
Okay, because the density there would be concerned, I know we need housing that's affordable, but is that, is that what that property's going to be used, used for? Y'all just said it's going to be for swapping for other properties somewhere else to do something, because the state and the federal government requires, if you use up one piece and, and fill it in, you got to have one to replace it, so is that what's going on?
We haven't, we have not gotten that far yet, we're going to use the College Avenue portion, start there, and then the adjacent property, we're going to use whatever parcels we can in order to build the workforce housing, but the remainder of it, as I said, the wetlands will not be built upon.
So is.
Now, there's nothing, I mean, we didn't have anything in mind about trading or transferring anything, if, if I heard your question correctly.
Yes, I'm, I'm saying other parcels that you go to a certain commercial or whatever you're changing it to, and the sole reason is to, like you said, to mitigate it to somewhere else to be able to do something to it. If you go back up and down the back beach road, which has nothing to do with us, but that's what they've been doing for years, is then you go out, once you fill in something else, you got to go make a wetland somewhere else, is that what's going to happen?
I can't say that for sure right now, as I said, that's not in the plan, but I can certainly get you a better, a better concept of what it is that we plan to do there, before the, before the item appears at the agenda with the commission.
Michael Johnson, it's Michael Fuller, I'm going to try to address the question. I think what you refer to is, is a development that anticipates or plans on impacting wetlands, they have to mitigate those impacts, but in this case, like Mr. Johnson said, they're not planning on impacting the wetlands.
So why are we needing to change it? If you don't need it.
So he intends to build on the upland portion of the property.
Right, but the lower, the downward portion of it is wetland, so it shouldn't have to be changed. Why are we going through, why is the city going through the expense to change this?
In each parcel takes one designation, unless you split the parcels, it has to have one or the other.
So that's two parcels?
No, that's one parcel we're talking about.
But it's under two.
No, we just talked about the first parcel.
Okay, but don't they work together with both parcels?
They will, they will join together, I'm sure.
Is there been a cost analysis to do all this? Or is this just?
I'm going to speak for Mr. Johnson, but I'm sure it's a ways off from the plans laid out.
Yeah, we're in the preliminary stages right now, we have not, there's no cost analysis in place right now.
Okay, I vote against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you said you were 203 College?
Yes, sir, opposite end.
Looking at the address, I'm trying to find it.
Thank you, Derek Thomas, 1100 West End Street, if I recognize this property, it's the one that had one house on it that was built by the original owner, so for this 29 acres, does the developer have any idea how many units they can put into that section?
It would depend on.
Was it on and it's changed?
How much has to be protected?
So no actual number of how many units are going to be stuck in the middle of this, what used to be one?
All we know is what can go in there if it was fully developed, but it's not. Something this large would take development order with a large plan, so even though it's a city, it still would come back if it's, you know, it's over what, 10 acres? All right, anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
A second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second, no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, request number six, this looks for me.
Request six, small scale land use amendment, rezoning, owner is Michael Mitchell, applicant is also Michael, Michael Mitchell, informed from general commercial, general commercial two, change to mixed use on it, mixed use.
Okay, staff, can you remind me, when it came the first time, what was the request at zone at that time?
I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, it came before this board back in March, back here in March, public hearing, the request at that time was, the request was for going from general commercial two to mixed use two.
Okay, now it's mixed use three.
Correct, that's the, that's the, the question for the board.
Okay, questions for the staff?
I think last time we had the applicant present to ask him his intentions, applicant here to, to contact.
Yeah, you might give us some context, y'all.
How y'all doing? My name's Michael Mitchell, 1301 Caldwell Drive, and my intentions is to put single family home there, and turn, you know, I just want to put a cover, most I can put is two houses there, that is, if I was able to subdivide it and split it into two parcels, but as of right now, I just want to add a single family home, no type of apartments, the density and all that is not even going to allow me to, you know, build like that, I just want to switch it over and put a single family home, you know, to sell it, get another taxpayer, yeah, that's my only plan. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, sir, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name's Frederick Mosley, 807 West Street, I am the owner of the property next to him, it's a car wash, and it's, it's a small lot, but if they put houses on that lot, it's going to be next to my bathroom cleaners, and this property would be like 50 feet from the nearest bathroom cleaner. All right, behind me is 100 feet from the nearest bathroom cleaner, and then on the, in front of me is 160 feet from the nearest bathroom, so we hadn't had any kind of problems because there hasn't been any houses really close to the bathroom cleaners. Now, there are some bays there that people wash, and they're about 50 feet away, but most of the time, when people wash their cars, the windows are up, doors are up, no noise, okay? I mean, it's wetland right there, my property's wetland, I'm not pretty sure if that property is, so it'd be a better fit for a commercial property to be there, because they have to have a holding pond, and by having a holding pond, it would keep all that water off my property. Now, if there was a house on that piece of property now, you would not allow me to put a car wash there, because these people would say, hey, it's too much noise, we don't want the problem, now it's reversed, I don't want the problem, okay? I'll say that.
Now, let me ask you a question, there's a residence right on the other side of Center Avenue.
Yes, sir, it's 102 feet away from the nearest, it's actually a street.
Have you gotten any complaints from them?
Never.
But.
But they're.
Stops on the other side.
Yeah, because he, he can build five feet from the property line, so it would be 50 feet, and that's like half the distance.
Okay, thank you. Mixed use three does have a five foot setback on its side, but it's, so he could go right up to within five feet of that.
So because this is a corner walk right off the back, there has to be two front setbacks along both 11, and, and I, I.
Person first.
Person first.
So those would be.
So in the rear, yeah, in the rear, I believe the setback would be.
Twenty.
Twenty, and then to the south, it would be, because there is a single stop to look at this further, but I believe it would be five, but typically, if there's residential, I think it states if there's residential development nearby, the setbacks would actually be 12, so because they're a single family, I believe that's how, that's what we require.
Yes, sir, please state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Bush.
Yeah, my name is Bruce Bush. I own twenty-one fifty, which is his lot, the Curzy Avenue, the twenty-one fifty. And then I own a vacant lot, ten twenty-seven, Curzy Avenue. Now, when I purchased all those properties four and a half years ago, and I went to see Mike, you know, I didn't do the paperwork, I just took his word, he told me at that time, the city had converted ten twenty-seven from mixed use back to commercial two. And he told me that I would be wasting my time and money to try to ask for the commercial property to be converted to mixed use. So me taking Mike Kane, I think it's his name, I took his word and I asked him money, but I made my decision, I moved on from that. So now, with his issue, which we have no problem in, best of luck, that's y'all's job or whatever. But we have businesses there and we have day-to-day investments. You got a business, I got a real estate company on the corner, Curzy Avenue, that lot has a county ditch in front of it. So when I go to the county, the county says they own the ditch, but the city won't let nobody put a driveway from eleventh street to that property. My problem is I don't care what anybody builds on there, I just don't want all the traffic backing out of Curzy in my yard or my real estate company day and night, or when I bid. And I'm saying they would, but you, if you were there, you would see it our way. We trying to do a day-to-day business, clean up, if he gives houses there, that's fine, just give him street access from eleven street, but not from Curzy. Now, last time we were here, there were twenty other people in the neighborhood that showed up, and we were all in agreement that we didn't need no more houses in the neighborhood, we fixing to have that anymore. Man, I buy some businesses. Don't we want some business amendment? Somebody to, if somebody don't do nothing, but open something there and put somebody on the telephone, a business amendment would be something to benefit in the neighborhood as well. But whatever happens, happens, but we don't want it for the fact is, there's already. And him about the car wash, it's, he ain't even open right now. He's talking about when he does open back up, when the phone starts ringing, remember? And he don't wanna be the problem, he's already been there. We wish the guy luck. He's had that land for sale for sixteen hundred days. Real estate's based on two things, location and price. If it ain't selling, it's either in the wrong place or it's too much money. Anyway, y'all got a job duty.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we both, yeah.
Uh, yes, you better come up to the mic.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Michael Mitchell, thirteen oh one Caldwell Drive. Uh, to address the issues, I've lived on Curzy Avenue before for like ten years when my grandmother was there. It's never been a problem with the car wash in the house. My house that I would build probably would be, it may be fifty feet from the car wash, but I guarantee you if you get the tape measure, the other houses that's to the south is fifty feet, oh, so it's not a hundred. So he's never had a complaint before, there's no need to worry about the future complaints. And as far as the backing out and access to eleventh street, that's just, I don't understand that because everybody who else lives on Curzy Avenue has no problem backing out their driveway. They don't get in nobody else's yard when they back out or whatever his concern is, you know? So it's like, I don't understand what the problem is. Yes, it was for sale, it's my property, I can choose to sell it, choose not to sell it, you know? And I had tried a business there, the business in that area does not work. I had a mice munchies of, I was one of the first people to start a mobile food business back in two thousand and seven. That's when I purchased the property and then I put the retention point there because the contractor and they were told me I had to have that because I wanted to put a restaurant or pool behind, so I had to do all of that. But now that I, I've learned and I don't need to do that, I wanna switch to residential and I wanna make good on my investment that I had for so long. I don't wanna be lowballed and sell it for a little or nothing when I could put a house on here, put a family in here, and make my money and, you know, and everybody's in. So just to rebuttal, you know, it's not gonna be a problem with no neighbors calling the police because it never has been. And you don't need access from eleven street. Everybody that stays in the Curzy has no problem, never had a problem, no issue. So, um, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I wanted to just verify something. We were talking about setbacks earlier. I looked at the language in MU three. And just to, just to be clear, that setback to the south, um, it states that the different setbacks are for R one and R two, those districts, i- it is adjacent to-
Right.
the sub lot. Um, there's not R one or R two around, so it would, it would be, I just wanted to make that careful.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this? Okay, saying none, any additional questions from the board?
Uh, yes, I wanted to say something. I, I'm abstaining from this vote because I already have that, I can say it's your statement. But I do wanna clarify one thing. I called the police on him, because I live at the ten eighteen. And his, his car wash on Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings is loud. And I know I've had to call the police because I was working shift, working the meal. And it's loud on Saturday mornings and it does, it can become disruptive. We had older people living there at that time. So I just wanted to clarify that. It does get loud at the car wash. Uh, they play their music and they play it loud. So I'm just clarifying, you said nobody ever called the police, I have called the police. So I just wanted you to know that. It can get loud. And if you do put a house there, I'm pretty sure they're gonna get, uh, woke up in the morning on Saturday morning, I'm worried with the loud music. So I was just letting you know where, where I came from. Well, I was just saying, because I lived there and I never had a problem. Well, I lived three houses down there for thirty years, so I know, uh, it can be disruptive in the noise.
Point made. Um, any other comments or questions?
So this, this for MU three. Is everything else around there MU two?
Right.
And is there a reason to go with MU three versus MU two, or is it just because they're, they're in similar?
That's correct. The request had already gone before, had gone through the process, really. Um, ultimately, MU two request was, um, decided by the state commission, and so the applicant came back with different requests, this time being MU three.
A lot of difference. More freedom? More uses?
Yeah, seventy-five percent.
Alright, any other comments, questions?
You go over there today and there's so many cars parked up down that road, there, nobody's got enough parking as it is. You put up units over there and they don't have that access from eleventh street, there just gonna be more cars parked on Curzy Avenue right at the stop sign.
Uh, for the record, that was Mr. Bruce Bush. As I said, right at the beginning, please, if you're gonna make statements, come to the mic and state your name and address. It's all for the records, it's, you know, because some people will look at this and we don't talk to the commissioners about this stuff. Again, thank you, sir. Alright, um, go have a motion. A motion?
I'll make a motion and I'll say, I know it's your property and I, I believe people have a right to make a request. I have a motion to approve all those.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay, you know, alright, I'll second the motion and, uh, for the benefit of voting. Alright, there's no further discussion, please take the roll.
Mr. Crosby?
Yeah.
Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
And Mr. Barker?
He's abstaining.
Uh, motion passes two to one with one extension.
And you have filed before KVA, I think. Uh, I think you have to update it.
Yes.
You do need to update it. Because it's date specific. Thank you. Again, this will go to the city commission, so, uh, make sure you let them know your thoughts. Alright, request number seven, state it out.
Request seven is a request for land change, zoning, two point eight acres approximately to General Commercial Two, G C two, Panama City, to Urban Residential Two, R two, Panama City. State Avenue, Michael McCormick, sorry, Michael McCormick at Hall, and owner of Sage Development Group.
Okay, I will have a question for the applicant, uh, when we get to it. This one was also before, a few months back, uh, at that time for an apartment development. Any questions from the board for staff? I know there are some here to, uh, to discuss this. Mr. McNeil, you're representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to wait for you to hear some of the questions? Do you wanna know that? Uh, my question is, what, what do you got planned?
You changed, you changed the order? Uh, I-
I did.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, I'm Sean McNeil, McNeil Carroll Engineering, representing Doctors McCormick and Goodwill, or by extension Sage Development, who are, uh, will be developers of the, uh, of the property. Uh, yes, there is a, uh, we want the E R two zoning so we can put in, um, up to forty-eight townhomes. The townhome will be two stories in height, and we believe the property will support it. We also, uh, our intention is also to keep a fifteen-foot buffer on the residential side, which is the, uh, left and north side of the property.
How much buffer here, I'm sorry?
There's no intention for a four-story like was planned, several-
No intention whatsoever.
And that would have to come back to us for the mountain or once it, or would it, it's not ten acres, only five?
That is, yeah, it is five acres. Uh, uh, two point eight eight is on the property appraisers or, uh, the site we got it from. Um, but it is roughly about, probably about four point six acres by measurement, by the legal deed. And also, I just wanna let you know, I have Chase and, uh, Harriet Patel here with Sage Development, if you have any questions as a developer. And we've worked with them for over twenty years and I've never known them not to do what they said.
Okay, uh, thank you. We will take the audience, maybe questions or comments. You might wanna grab a closer chair. Okay, still going to the back.
We're sitting here flipping coins as who's going first. Jim Brown, seven oh seven Gabriel Street. Um, my, my house is going to be adjacent to the property. I live, the biggest concern that I have is two, um, um, privacy and the creek that runs behind my house. My property actually goes to the other side of that creek. So my property is about, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how much it is. I, I asked the surveyor while he was out and supposedly he found a marker that's out there. I haven't gone to the other side to, to see where that marker is exactly at. But, um, two questions. One, we're concerned about flooding. Because we don't have that issue right now, but on Wendy and down at the end of Gabriel Street where I live at, it will flood now.
Breezy, um, breezy floods.
Oh, it breezy, yeah, breezy, I'm sorry, yeah, breezy, not windy. But, uh, uh, but it floods now at the end of the street already without anything on it. Now, since we lost all the trees, of course, we don't have anything to soak in up any of the water, so it even floods even worse. Fortunately, I'm high and dry at the beginning of the road, but if you build onto it, now you're gonna be causing a backup. Another thing that's gonna happen too is where you gonna put the traffic at for State Avenue? State Avenue is probably one of the worst roads in Bay County. It's terrible. There's no way to widen that road. If you do, you're going into a ditch either way. So there's no way to wide, widen the road. Where's your access point gonna be for the townhouses? Because you have Publix right there. And not to mention, they just put those brand-new power poles up adjacent to that property, so now you're building right on a power line. So I'm not exactly, and, and then talking to the people that were doing the surveying, most of it's wetland anyway. Have we done an assessment on how much wetland is there and what you're gonna end up doing with it? Because I guarantee it, you're not gonna build on all five acres. And if you do, you're gonna ruin my property. And then, and then the reasonable expectation of privacy in my property, I know it's only two stories, but I'm recovering from Hurricane Michael just like everybody else is. I have a six-foot fence. I would appreciate if you wanna build a two-story house, I appreciate y'all putting some money into it and building me a twenty-foot fence behind my house so you can't see over it. And if you wanna do something like that or put trees up or something, we, I wanna see a land development, I wanna see foliage, I wanna see privacy. I wanna know what you're gonna do with the product, property. What is the property going to be? I know you had said townhouses, but is it going to be workforce housing again? Because we went through that, what, eighteen months ago, they were gonna do workforce housing and, uh, and that neighborhood is not sustainable for that. We have a lot of, it's a well-established neighborhood. It's been there for a very long time. There's a lot of older people that live there. Billy Brady lives over there. So we don't want that in our neighborhood. We live in a very clean neighborhood. It's a very organized neighborhood. Everybody cuts their grass, everybody takes care of their houses. We don't even wanna invite an element there that's gonna destroy that. Plus, it's twenty-third street. It ain't like there's a whole lot of stuff to do here in Panama City to start with. I mean, since the hurricane, I mean, for God's sake, how many more houses we need to build for the people that aren't moving here? You know what I'm saying? So, and there's no job for them to make any money anyway, so find some job for them to do to make some money. Find us something to do, like go to a movie. And, uh, you know, why don't we work on something like that instead of slapping up apartments every block down to that damn street? Tell you what, don't build no more that damn Dollar Generals, I'm sick of seeing them. But, but that's, that's, I mean, I know I've asked a lot of questions and rambled for a minute, but I do have a whole lot of questions and, and, uh, and it's a really, really, really fine neighborhood and we don't wanna mess it up. Those people have put a lot of money into rebuilding that Publix and Walmart and everything else. My wife's a nurse over at Gulf Coast. We already have a homeless problem over there to start with. They walk through that parking lot twenty times a day at all hours of the night. And, uh, there's no security at Gulf Coast Hospital. And, uh, you know, we just don't wanna continue to invite, uh, that, you know, population. We just don't need there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're not doing Dollar Generals, we're doing gas stations.
Gas station, yeah. Well, we won't ever run out of gas, will we?
Anyone else? Yes, sir, please state your name and address.
My name's Wilbur Campbell, uh, seven eleven Gabriel. Uh, been living there since, uh, nineteen ninety. Uh, and I agree with Jim. We're worried about when he moves in. I'm next door neighbor too. And, uh, it is major concern to me about the traffic and the flood. You know, they just built that power line and they had to put those huge pads down to keep the trucks from going down in the bog because it's so wet. If it's not a wetland, then why am I paying a flood insurance? Hey, I, I agree with some people that if you own the land, you got the right to do what you want to with it. Come on, guys, my bird sanctuary is already gone because there's no trees. I hear twenty-third street, uh, like it's next door, uh, because there's no trees. Hurricane Michael took good care of that. But if we can't take care of the roads, we can't promise people a Jersey wagon ride to twenty-third street. And I'm a guest, I'm free.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Tina Sane. I live at six one six Wendy. I am at the end of that road there, so I will have the least impact. But I'm here for the people that live at the end that butt up to the property. They have put a lot of money into their backyards, they have pools, they go out and they have privacy. So they're concerned, and I have spoke with Mr. Patel and he's been very gracious and shone about it. And they are saying they're going to do a, a big buffer, they're going to do a tall privacy fence, and we want the trees. But our biggest concern is the flooding because exactly what he just said, breezy floods now all the time. That land is very low and so water stands all the time. And I did watch Gulf Power, when they were doing those huge poles, they did have to put the pads to keep their trucks from sinking in. So the water is- So the water is a problem, the drainage is an issue. I think what y'all are planning is good. I think it'll be good for that property. If we can address the flooding, the lift station, I'm concerned about a lift station, how are we going to absorb all of that, toilets, everything happening, the infrastructure, those are my concerns, privacy and flooding and the lift station and the wetland mitigation. Where's the retention pond going to be? So I'd like to see the drawing of it. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Eric Thomas, one hundred West Front Street. Um, I have the similar problem in mind, where they, uh, took away what used to be the drip ditches and the drainage system, and, um, now, when there is a hurricane and there is huge amounts of rain in a short period of time, there's nowhere for the water to go. There, there needs to be, if you look at California, the way they do it, it gets bigger and bigger as you go down the drainage system. So there is a place for the water to go during a hurricane event where there's huge amounts of water in a short period of time. And if there isn't anywhere for that water to go, it'll just spread out into the surrounding, surrounding neighborhoods. And you're dealing with twice as many properties in that one space as there are in all of the other surrounding places. So you're, you're taking away what, what people have spent a lifetime doing and, and changing it and changing everything else in a short period of time. I'd like you to consider that, you just said, even though it's only just once every couple of years, when it is a major event, that will affect everybody else around it.
Thank you, sir. So Urban Residential Two is thirty units per acre max. Of course, that doesn't take into account. What happens to all of that? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Lloyd Cadlec, nine zero three Jeremy Lane. Um, just like the, uh, the previous proposal, the, the property rights and the zoning code exist, I just quote from the code itself, that it exists to preserve, promote, protect, help, safety, welfare, including aesthetic qualities of life, and to ensure compatibility of adjacent land uses to avoid nuisance conditions. And everyone here would agree that not having privacy in your backyard is a nuisance condition. And so one of the things is that the, the developer, being local, is a neighbor, and, and just like any neighbor, you want to be considerate, maybe what Jesus said, as you would have others do to you, do the same. And if you want someone building in your backyard, being able to look down and see whatever you're doing and maybe not put enough buffer between you and them, then by all means. But I think, um, for the most part, Mr. Patel has been, and the communication is very reasonable in the discussions. And so the concerns that, uh, my mother and father-in-law at six oh three Wendy Lane have, they have shared deep property on the west end of the discussed property is, uh, would a developer consider one-story units on the land that butts up to the existing properties, uh, to keep the elevation down and protect the privacy of that? Um, and are they agreeable to possibly a lesser number of units? Uh, would they be willing to ensure that the rear of the properties are not compromised for the proposed changes? Um, and, and one definite point of concern was if the zoning change is approved, does U R two, um, prevent the building of multifamily apartments in that area? Uh, because that is definitely one of the big concerns as well as far as traffic and the, the potential of, uh, like the type of folks that would be living in that area. And, um, other than that, they didn't really have any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Lloyd Cadlec.
Spelled up.
K A D L E C.
Now, just, everybody needs to remember, this is General Commercial Two right now. It could be a lot of, a lot of things and a lot of multiple stories and a lot of other things.
Could be a lot worse than that.
Now, just curious, and I did write Gabriel, and I wrote Wendy, and I wrote breezy and all that. Um, one thing I didn't look at was how tall the buildings are. Are there any of those residences that are two-story or are they all one-story?
All one-story.
Or are they all one-story?
I live on two stories.
You live on two stories. So it's one or two or three.
Do you want, oh, I didn't, it's right at the end, okay, you're right.
Just curious, because that wasn't one thing I was looking at, was the height of the buildings.
Lloyd Cadlec, nine zero three Jeremy Lane. Um, one thing, when you, when you came up and you said about the setback, um, if I look right, U R two has a setback at the rear elevation of twenty-five feet, but you said fifteen. Were you speaking differently? I mean, I just printed this off the website today, I didn't know if you meant.
We're going to give him the chance.
Yeah, so, and, but then, but then, um, also, when the people that bought on breezy, Gabriel, and Wendy bought their properties, they knew it was G C two with the potential of what was already back there. And so that is, the potential resistance is that is, they knew it could be that tall, they knew it could be a hospital, office building. However, they accepted that, and that is one of the primary resistances to the change in the zoning code for that property. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. McNeil, can I just want to make one point? We've, we've talked a lot today about what should happen on that property and setbacks and all this kind of thing. It's important to note that this meeting is not about what the actual development would be, it's what the uses could potentially be. They have to go through a development quarter stage in order to do, to address wetlands or, uh, any setbacks or any number of other things. That's a different process from what you're looking at today. So I don't want us to think that we're, today approving forty-three townhouses at fifteen feet or whatever it is, that comes at a different stage, has to go through a different process than this today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Sean McNeil, uh, full time at Harrison Avenue. The, uh, a couple of things, and I think you've already kind of answered a couple of, uh, concerns, and that is the compatibility. I mean, G C two is probably less compatible than U R two in this particular case, and, um, not to make light of it, but you could put Dollar General there right there. Or, or a restaurant, or a bar, or, or a car dealership, or, um, medical offices. I mean, the doctors own the property, that probably was their intention long ago, I'm not sure. The, uh, as far as traffic, traffic would be certainly less intense in a, uh, commercial development, if you probably couldn't realize. Yes, we will be using State Avenue as the primary access and the only access to the, to the property. The, um, other concerns were, I believe, flooding and, uh, stormwater. Well, we've been doing this for twenty-seven years, and, uh, I don't think I've had too many complaints, but we're not going to adversely impact that neighborhood with stormwater. We, we are required by law to basically attenuate the stormwater as it is today. So there's no increased adverse impact to this property. If you have existing flooding problems, you have existing flooding problems, um, you may want to do your city fellow worst department about that. The, there is issues with the storm, it causes a lot of problems, there are a lot of ditches running through this area, and maybe in their way of the, of the abuse bayou, Robinson Bayou, wherever it may be. And those, that storm causes a lot of damage to trees into those ditches that were not cleaned out for a long while. Um, and so those ditches need to be addressed as much as possible. I hope I answered all the questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, Wilbur Campbell, seven one one Gabriel, and I'd like to make a recommendation to the, uh, developers that they, uh, investigate the I center, uh, that's to the south of that property. Uh, when they first built that, they had to abandon the building. And it was a long time before they came in there with a, with the I center, and we were told because of foundation, the soil would not hold the foundation. I'd recommend you look into that.
Yeah, that, that's part of their development plans, they would have to do soil samples, core boards and all that, right? All right, anyone else? Not seeing anyone, any other comments from the board? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Second. Motion to approve in a second, please take your role.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. And if y'all would like to leave before we go on, or you can stay, I'd love to have you.
You can sit.
No, no, usually it happens, we get right in the middle of something, I have to stop it, so if people want to leave, they leave, so just give me a go.
Request eight is a request for land use change in the zoning of approximately point zero point four two eight, or to residential one, R one Panama City to General Commercial Two G C Two Panama City located at fifteen oh four and fifteen oh six Ferry Avenue, FS Properties LLC, and Chalisi Distribution Property LLC. Are the owners and Sandra Owens is the applicant.
Okay, uh, just a question for staff. This one, item eight and item nine are kind of related, are they not?
Correct.
Because they're back-to-back properties.
Correct.
Just, just to establish that.
And, and is the intention to, the, the six parcels that they're defining in the description, is that the ones that face Fifteenth Street as well?
Correct, if we can go to the zoning, to the zoning map. So, yeah, the, ultimately, the goal was to take the parcels on Ferry and Elizabeth to G C two. As you can see, they already have G C two's in the south. So total of six parcels, yes.
Yeah, but that, that would be one project for all, all this.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, anyone in the audience other than the applicant want to discuss this or have questions? Nope, you're just moving closer.
Sure, that's why I can hear them.
Getting ready to sound, okay. Um, all right, yes, sir, if you would like to make some comments.
I'm nervous there for a second. So, good afternoon, uh, my name's Bob Johnson, I'm with M P M Services, and I'm also joined with Ms. Katie Williamson, she's a real estate development manager with Circle K, the proposed, uh, user, developer, operator for this location. Uh, as has been, has been pointed out, there, there are two requests, request eight and request nine. Um, we're talking about eight right now, the two parcels that are on Ferry, fifteen oh four and fifteen oh six Ferry, and they're currently zoned residential, and we're looking to rezon those to, uh, General Commercial Two, uh, and also a land use amendment. And so that's where we're at, the overall, the six parcels together are going to represent roughly one point seven acres. The, I can get a little bit of the detail, I feel like I'm going to be competitive when the next case comes up, but I'll try to cover everything now. It's fifty-two hundred square foot convenience store and gas station.
Just for the record, I said that just, I use one almost every day.
I, I, I thought to myself, what a segue. Um, but in seriousness, so, so it's a fifty-two hundred square foot facility, gas station, convenience store, eight dispensaries, they're going to be for general petroleum, and then there's going to be two, uh, stations for, for diesel, twenty-six parking spaces, there will be onsite water retention, um, signage, of course, and Circle K does a great job. I, I don't know, I mean, you are, you're very, probably very familiar with Circle K's reputation and what they've done throughout your community and, uh, and, and elsewhere, but, uh, very reputable, and so we're looking to get the six parcels together, two of which, to that front Fifteenth Street, they're good to go in terms of General Commercial Two. The two on, on Ferry, our residential, need to get those rezoned, and then, of course, a, a land use amendment for those parcels.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the app? Seeing none, has anyone in the audience come up with questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Question approved.
Have a motion to approve in a second. There's no further discussion, please take your role.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Our request number nine.
Request nine is a request for a rezoning of approximately point zero point five two eight acres for General Commercial One Panama City to General Commercial Two, G C Two Panama City located at fifteen fifteen and fifteen seventeen Elizabeth Avenue, Frank S, Chalisi Jr. and Chalisi Distribution Property LLC are the owners, Sandra Owens is the applicant. Wanted also, just to state for your record, um, the current use per the property appraiser is vacant commercial, um, and it's co-in a store. So just for the record for these two, so I just wanted to put that out there, because I don't think that update made it to your packets.
Okay, very good. Uh, you don't have to go over all the things you just did for the other. Any questions? Anyone here to address this? I don't know. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion in a second to approve, discussion please take your role.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stantz?
Yes.
Mr. Dubuque?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, thank you very much, and request number ten.
Request ten is a request for rezoning of approximately zero point four zero acres from General Commercial One G C One Panama City to General Commercial Two G C Two Panama City. It's located at two zero one seven East Third Street, Fifteen Smiley is the owner and the applicant.
Okay, questions for staff? Seeing none, audience participation.
My question is, what, yeah, what's the intent of one, two, three?
So originally, when the applicant came in, the staff about what's currently permissible the parcel, G C one is, as you all know, is the neighborhood, it's the neighborhood commercials only. And so what they explained is that they want to work up kind of a contractor office type of warehousing hybrid, and so, um, reviewing the zoning district, staff felt that it would be best to counsel them to move forward and try to get a G C two, um, they changed to G C two, so.
Let me, let me ask you a question also. Parcel right on the corner that has the new building on it, it's just white on our map. What's on it?
So according to the city of Panama City maps, and I'm trying to pull up, it has the Millville Downtown District.
So that's what the white area on this map.
Correct, so it would, yeah, it doesn't, for some reason, on this map, it doesn't show up, but on some of our other G I S, um, materials, it does.
Okay, so.
So it's, it's down, it's Millville Downtown.
But it's, it's a general commercial of some sort, obviously. That's what it looks like, picking up, it's not a residence.
Yeah, it, it downtown, it must have looked purple and.
Yes, yes, yeah, more of a mixed use type of, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Look, um, my name's Keith Nelson, I live at two three seven Elm Avenue, just by the corner from the subject property. Um, right off the bat, uh, in my world where I work, we, we like to give a bottom line up front, so I'm going to give that to you. Basically, I am urging, uh, the council to decline this variance request, um, and I'd like to take just a few minutes to, to explain, uh, why I think you should. Bottom line is, the, the approval of this subject, uh, G C two variance request, in my opinion, as living in the area a long time, I think it contradicts the area's use, the previous improvements, and the planned improvements that we've heard forever for this area. Basically, it's a step back. Um, I will try, I appreciate your, uh, clarification of what this meeting's for, and I'll try to keep this on point with, uh, maybe things that are in the way here. So, uh, I recently sold a parcel I owned at three seventeen Sherman to the city of Panama City, and I've got some paperwork here, um, that I pulled, but basically, the city of Panama City has pulled together a swath of property that runs from Sherman all the way down to the, the, the park, um, that's at the end of the street there, uh, in that lighter lime color, green. Um, you know, I, I would like to, as, as a neighbor and living in the area, I would like to know how, if, if this, approving this variance request, does it contradict the long-term planning vision Panama City has? Again, for this large amount of property that the city of Panama City has been purchasing all around the area. So that is concern number one, I would like to consider. Um, my second concern, and it may speak to the misinformation or, uh, contradiction of information that might be publicly available. The information I looked at had this subject parcel under the downtown area, um, and under Planning one oh one, uh, your. And under Planning 101, your planning for dummies kind of thing on the website, it's very clear what the uses in that area are. And I've got some pictures and stuff that are going to be hard to get today. Actually, would y'all like a copy?
Sure.
Just the Sunday, I'll hold you there. Really, I... So really, I just cut and paste a lot of your web page's information for you to look at, but um, you know, the... If indeed the subject property falls into the Millville Downtown Improvement Board, any sort of construction-related office, storage, warehousing, things like that are subject. Or, I'm sorry, not subject, they are absolutely not allowed. It says, "All other uses must be prohibited besides these eleven uses." And there's some pictures. Let's see, I don't remember the pages, if you go to the pictures, I took these pictures this morning, this is the current state of the property as of right now. Moving this from the GC One to a GC Two designation is only going to make a, I mean, it's not going to help the situation. Unless, and I'd be interested to hear if there is a plan at this point to approve that, but, you know, this is the main road that leads down to recreational park area. Again, property that the city of Panama City has purchased for who knows, you know, what the plan is. You know, it's just unsightly, I don't know, they built some kind of fence looking thing there, it looks more like a billboard, don't know what that's for. The heavy trucks in and out are bringing dirt out of the roadway. All of these things are just not, again, in my humble opinion, are not at all what this area has supposedly been moving towards. This is, again, in the wrong direction, it's going in the wrong direction. Another concern I had, the subject property has been owned by Mr. Smiley since 2017. It was zoned GC One at that time, so we're not talking about, he just purchased the property recently and looking to do something with it. And it does, I have to ask, you know, is this move, does GC Two, a reactionary response or a pro-actionary response? My sense is it's reactionary, and he's probably using the property outside of how it's currently designated to be used. And that's my surmization of maybe the situation, but again, I don't understand what's changed now. The other concern I have as being an immediate neighbor is the long-term effects of this, so. Mr. Stamps couldn't agree with you more, I think everybody has a right to develop their own property. I own several parcels in and around Panama City as well. But in this case, you know, this immediate need, as it moves on and as you move into the long-term use of the property, designating this as GC Two, I think, my sense is, may have a longer-term impact in a very volatile area. If you want to clean up Millville, this is right on the main street down the park. This is, it would just be terrible potentially in the long term. I read through, I'm not too familiar with what can be allowed in GC Two that can't be in One. I know larger lot coverage is one of the possible differences between that, but also dispensaries. And I've got a three-year-old girl at home, I don't want a marijuana dispenser as possible twenty years now. I can just responsibly tell you the property moving from there. So anyway, trying to stay focused on the use of the property. You know, I won't take, you know what, I won't take any more time, I think we're going to point.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize for the interruption, but before anybody else leaves, someone, who's a wallet there?
Does he got any money in it?
Does it look like a grain?
It's mine.
That's mine.
Good job, dude.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Okay, it's not mine.
Yeah, I'm a little curious for the staff, because GC One allows for professional offices.
Absolutely.
They're asking for an office, I don't know. I want to let that, but we'll let that.
Kevin Elliott, I own 319 Elm, which is at the top, I think that road. This is a horrible idea. The, I second everything that he just said. After the hurricane, we all lived through it, it was this big visioning process, whoever cool came in and built this, and envisioned this amazing future for Millville, look at the pictures. They don't include warehouses at the corner of Third and Sherman, so just for those of us who aren't familiar with that neighborhood, that cross right in the middle, Third and Sherman, that's the heart of downtown Millville, that boy Casey right there, Jean's Oyster Bar, the old Sweet Magnolias Building. There's a park right there, the city just bought the old wastewater treatment plant from the county, they want to develop it into a park, we were shown visions of bike paths, of people walking their dogs and doing all this. It broke my, and I agree, everybody has a right to develop their property within the zoning. Nobody gets to do just whatever they want, that's the whole point of this process. And it just broke my heart when that lot right across from Jean's Oyster Bar was bought, and they put up a big green warehouse at the heart of downtown Millville. You put another one right next to it, and there's houses, these cute little Millville Cracker Cottage houses that we all just love, are right across the street, those little residential lots right there. 319, I own it's a half acre, I plan to, I have a house that sits sort of in the middle of it, and I plan to build a couple cute little cottages on either side of my place. I want Millville, Millville should feel like a sweet little neighborhood, not like an industrial park. And if you put another warehouse right there, kiss downtown Millville goodbye. Kissing goodbye, imagine a giant industrial warehouse next to a history class broom company. With eighteen wheelers, I mean, Florida Rock and Tank is up towards the, you know, all that up there, but this is a horrible idea, please do not approve this change.
What is in the green building right there on the corner? Do you know what that is?
Come on, Kevin.
Are you talking about the green building on the corner of Sherman and Third?
Yeah.
I have hours.
Are you the woodworking people?
Yes.
Okay, now I know what it is, because you were here before when we talked about that.
Well, I was gonna ask this gentleman, we own...
Yeah, please come up.
I've been reprimanded. I'm Kevin Land, and I, my wife and I own 303 Sherman Avenue, the big green warehouse that anybody, if they want to get up with us, they can come in and look at it, it is not a warehouse. It is a school of woodworking that's going to open in the future. We spent a lot of money there, unfortunately, and we're not touched. The building is going to be bringing in students that you want to learn to build this tape, we're going to teach you. If you want to learn to build anything wood, metal, glass, that's what we're going to be doing. So we're going to bring in retail people into that area and probably help fill out the restaurants next door. So, born and raised here, been here a long time, because I'm getting older. First thing, and I'm understanding that the website is not correct, but the Bay County Property Appraiser says this is a single-family residential lot that is under consideration. And if you would like a copy of it, sell a copy, I got it, I'll give it to you.
Well, that's probably what it's being taxed as.
Right.
Not what the land use.
Property appraisers.
Yeah, we kind of found that out, that the city has not called up to putting that on.
Again, it's what it's being used as, not what the zone is.
So here are my concerns, so we have a building next door, and we're trying to make everything, and if you look at the building, yes, it kind of looks like a warehouse, but that was because the LLC planning and zoning said that we had to do it a certain way, and that's what we did. So everything was approved, everything went through, all the variances, all, everything. But next door is, number one, what is the reason to change this commercial? And that's been asked. I've already gone through the property description. The gentleman down here has got legitimate question. Why did the city of Panama City pay so much money to get charrette designs in here? And we spent months and months and months going over and all these meetings down in Millville, that this is what it was going to be. Next door at the property, yes, there's all kinds of semis in there, there's kind of work, all kinds of heavy equipment. They have reported to the city, they wash their trucks in the street with power washers and get everything on the street, nobody's done anything about that. The tall fence you're talking about is because we put a security system all the way around our property. And anybody can come in and look at it, even them can come in and look at it. Everything on his property is blacked out, I don't care what is on their property. But they came out and they erected, we have an eight-foot privacy fence, above it now there's another six to eight-foot built on top of, I got a picture if y'all would like to see it. And all because they didn't want one little camera safety behind our building. So that's the reason the tall fence, I reported that, because I didn't ever think you could build a twenty-foot tall or sixteen-foot tall privacy fence, but that's what's happened there. The city code enforcement says there's nothing they can do about it, at all. They didn't say a problem. So that takes the care of it, the tall fence, if you want to know what it's for, because we put cameras.
But also, we have gotten broke, we have...
We've been broken into.
That's why we put security cameras up.
Yeah, security cameras up to keep people... Here's a picture from one of our neighbors, you can see this big old gigantic fence above, which is the ugliest thing you could ever imagine. If they would've talked to me, I would've showed them the, showed them the camera system that is running and say, "See, it's all blacked out, we're not looking at your property." But why that's been done that way, I don't know. The next thing is, we've watched rubble being buried in that back of that property, because all of our properties go downwards towards the north side. They've been buried rubble since the day they moved in, which in my construction field, that's a big no-no. But the city code enforcement, we've talked to them about that, and they won't do anything about that. So in the future, whatever they're going to build, what? We're having to put in a, a nearly 3,000 square foot retention fund. I don't see that much room on the back of that property for whatever they're going to do. And it's like the gentleman down here said, this wasn't the plan for Millville. This, this commercial equipment rolling in and out of there every day is, you know, it's making a mess, you look at the road every day in that area, it's raining, there's a big mud streak coming out of there, and our city tax paying dollars to clean it up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Do you want your picture back?
Yeah, here. Can you get it back, sir?
Real quick, I have one alibi, Keith Nelson, 237 Elm Avenue. Like to just build upon what was mentioned, I skipped over it because I felt like I was rambling too long the first time. One of the pictures I gave you, I took a snippet, in 2010, I moved into Elm Avenue about that, 2010. My grandparents built the house, so it's been, the house I live in now has been in my family, and my family's been on that street since 1948, I think, fifty-two, may have been, take a slide there on. Takeaway is a long time. You know, I work in Washington DC, I work for the State Department, US Department of State, and, you know, here is home, and I keep hanging on to this house, I keep thinking Millville's going to be, you know, improved since 2010, again, the screenshot of the study that was done back then, and it just never has. And quite honestly, at the risk of being a little dramatic, which I don't, you know, if this variance goes through, I just urge y'all to kill it before it even meets together with the council, because if this variance goes through, it might be time for the council to let the house go and move on.
Thanks, sir.
Just, just sort of, appreciate it.
It goes to the city whether we vote yes or no.
Correct.
It goes with whatever our recommendation is.
Thank you, I'm pretty unfamiliar with the process.
You said, you said variance, but no, it's not a variance, it's a rezoning.
Rezoning, okay.
As Mr. Chairman said, this is just a recommendation.
Got you.
So you need to go to the city council.
Okay. Well, words mean things, so I appreciate that, alright, thank you.
My name is James O'Shill, I live at 1904 East Third Street, it's almost directly across the street from this, excuse me, this project, I have two questions really. The first one is, they say that their plan is to build an office building there. Well, according to what I'm reading, the zoning that's presently there now would allow for an office building to go in there. So why do you need it to be rezoned? Another reason is why Third Street, the big, the big green building faces Sherman Avenue, not Third Street. All Third Street, every bit of Third Street, from Maple Avenue to our park, is residential. The house, I've lived there for fifty-seven years. The property across the street from me, on the south side, has just been purchased by the city, and the plan is there to build family homes across there, so all of Third Street is going to be residential. Plus the fact that this, you've seen one picture, let me, let me just show you this one too. One of the problems is right now, traveling, I can't come from my house down Third Street a lot of times, because those big vehicles are pulled out into the road to turn around and back it up, or they turn them out there to wash them or whatever. I have had to turn and detour down Elm Avenue a lot of times, because those vehicles are blocking Third Street. Now, Third Street is the main street in Millville, it runs down to our park, our beautiful waterfront park. And people go down there all the time to the dock to fish, to carry their dogs down there, their kids down there. They put up swings down there now, they go down there to play. And these big vehicles are running from that area down Third Street to Elm Avenue, and then down Elm Avenue is around, and it's, it's a, it's a dangerous thing. And it's just been our home for almost sixty years. It's a quite residential area, and I beg you to not consider approving this, thank you.
Thank you, sir. In case you weren't clear where we stood.
Kevin Elliott, 319 Elm, agreed, within the zoning, you should be able to build what you want. And I, by the way, I love that you're building, you have a trade school, we need, we need like fine art trade schools, but there's nobody in the world, I mean, you, who would say that doesn't look like a warehouse, sitting on the corner of Third Elm. It's a, by the way, it's a nice one, it's nice because you've got the cool, nice eaves coming out the windows, it's a very nice warehouse. But inside, you're going to do amazing things, but nobody's going to know that, because visually, you put another one next to it, you just told downtown Millville where this city wants to go in downtown Millville, and I mean, people like this, are these gorgeous little cute cottages, would you want to move in next to that? Of course you would not, you wouldn't buy, I'm, we all own properties down there, residential properties. This is going the wrong direction, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here or on the Zoom call?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. You've kind of heard the comments.
Yes. I'm Melinda Wine, 909 Cypress Avenue, and I'm here for Mr. Smiley. Okay, what we're planning on doing there is, he wants to put an office building, yes, just like Ms. Ann put across the street from Jean's Oyster Bar. It's not going to be no different, it's not going to be no bigger, it's not going to be no smaller. The building we want to put there will be covered by the green building, you won't be able to see it either way. That's all we want to do, yes, the trucks are there right now, one of them, it wouldn't make it to the shop, it's on the way to Detroit Diesel as we speak. The other truck will be moved to Cato Road, there will be no equipment there, we are planning on putting a office there with a roll-up door, that's it, there will not be no equipment on the property.
We need the zoning changed.
As far as the fence, we put up, because his wife was taking pictures around the corner of what was going on over there. As far as they say that the, whatever's being buried, it's recycled crushed concrete to keep it from washing out.
Why do you request the change?
We're, this is not a debate, excuse me, now, now, let's, let's don't get into debate back and forth. If you've got questions, we need to get them up on the record, so that it can be recorded, and then she'll get a chance to answer your questions, so.
The reason for the change was it was suggested to us to do the request.
So, if you stay GC One, it basically says you can do a professional office and professional personal service.
Yes.
Building.
Yes.
You're not going to have any large equipment there. So you're not going to be repairing the trucks, which would make the GC Two.
No, we don't repair our stuff on property anyway, we repair it, that, as far as the washing, yes, the truck was washed on the property, it wasn't washed in the road, it was washed in the property, you can see that there's a faucet in there with water hoses.
Oh, so, and same question, I think I just heard someone probably say, why get the GC Two versus GC One?
Because it was suggested that we do, staff.
They have suggested.
So originally, originally when the applicants came in, and what was described to us, yes, part of the use would be an office, the staff's understanding... but staff's understanding was that they also want to be like a warehousing component. The difference between, one of the key differences between G C one and G C two is that G C two introduces warehousing and storage of goods. So staff suggested that, once we had our conversation, that just to be on the safe side, you're talking about having a contractor hybrid warehousing, and this and depending on the scale of it, even then it would be best, because again, warehousing isn't permitted in G C one, right off the bat. So that's why staff suggested try to see the G C two zoning change, just to encompass everything.
Can you live with a G C one?
Um if if we, can we put a car in there?
A car in?
An old car, antique car.
In a garage, or in a storage unit?
Well, he's gonna have it as an office, but he is gonna have a roll-up door, that's an old antique car.
Right, and there's one, so that's that's the ware, that's a warehousing component, and that's why we.
It's not, it's not for our equipment, it's for an antique car.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from. Residential could have a garage, but G C one can't have a garage to park a car. Is that what you're saying? A garage, just a standard car garage?
Well, the front's gonna be an office.
Right.
Yes, sir, the front will be an office. There will be, I want to make sure I have it clear, because I don't want nobody to call and complain if it's approved. The front will be the office, the back will have a roll-up door, and he will have an antique car, and they can take their pictures like they've been doing to see that that's what's going in and out.
Yeah, I I see where you're coming from, as to why you recommended G C two, but uh. Other comments? Sir, you're gonna get one more time, come on up.
Kevin Elliott, three nineteen Elm Avenue, Industrial Avenue has offices with roll-up doors. Would you want to live on Industrial Avenue?
I'm just saying, G C one, she can do it right now.
Yes.
Okay, then what, then valid question, why the change? There's some, there there's something's, that that feels, why, if you could do exactly what you want to do right now, why do you, why are you asking for a change that doesn't feel right?
And we'll implement a three man plan the next time we do one of them.
James O'Kill, nineteen oh four East Third Street, Panama City, Florida. The gentleman, when they first purchased the property, uh their answer to me was, we're gonna build a home there. Uh we're gonna fill that property and make it look real pretty, but you see the pictures I just gave you, so you see what it looks like now. So if they get to change, are they going to do what they say they're going to do? Please, for the sake of the Millville residents, uh please don't allow this to happen, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be real quick. Keith Nelson, two thirty-seven Elm, no commentary from me, just to be clear, is this map correct?
The map up here?
Yes.
No, because that white section should be Millville Downtown District.
So is the subject property we're discussing now part of the Millville Downtown?
No, that's G C one, that's for.
Mr. Shields, you bring that, you're the father of downtown.
I agree with that, it's it's facing.
It's actually on the outskirts of the.
Not Third, it's facing Sherman, not Third, so it's part of downtown, yeah. The the building, the big green building.
Big green, but not the property beside, not this property.
No, not this property.
Okay, thank you.
Property across the third street.
Ask Ms. Lam.
Thank you.
See, I'm starting to know your name now, so this is.
This is only my second time up here. Two oh three College Avenue, and in reference to the pictures that I was taking, it was at the back of our building, which would be the north side. If you look in that picture, that added wooden wooden bins that they added is a front. The rubble that he was dumping on the property is is on the north side, Mr. Bryant's side. There was no need to put the fence up, that wasn't where I was taking the pictures. Anyway, I'm against it.
That's a code issue, that's not really something against it, but you're right.
But I'm against it.
I'm Melina Williams, four twenty-three Masalina Drive, I also own twenty-one eleven East Third Street, my real estate office, and I own the next door. So I'm in between Jean's Oyster Bar and Sweet Magnolias, I think it's completely inappropriate to stick a G one two right in the middle of Third Street, Millville. If they need to go industrial, if they're wanting to do something that requires them to have a warehouse space, I don't know how the definition of warehouse space would even incorporate a garage with a car in it, but I I just think it's completely inappropriate to throw a G C two in the middle of of what we have going on on Third Street, Millville, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Melina, M E L A N A, W E E M S. You're welcome.
Okay, very good, uh board, any, any questions for anyone?
Save the best for last, didn't you?
Anyone on the uh Zoom call that to address this? It's the blank office or something, okay. Any board comments? Board comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny, second, I have a motion to deny in a second, and uh please take your role.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Stamps?
Yes.
Mr. Gudey?
Yes, and I'll clarify, is, it looks like you can do what you want in the G C one, it really does. And you can have a garage, as far as I know, in a G C one, not a storage house or warehouse. Okay, anything else? I have to open it up for, according to the attorney's public predispensation, as if we kind of had it. Any, yes, sir, no one else.
Trying to make a brief, Derek Thomas, eleven hundred West Ten Street, uh noticing more than one of these incidences, that it's uh, it's the areas that haven't been developed yet that are the wetlands, that are being developed with the highest density in the old neighborhood. And unless you're gonna put that up on on piers or something, that's gonna affect how how it is everywhere else. Um on my street, uh the block across from me, there's the higher part, there's two roads on either side of the block, and the houses, there's four houses now that look right over the fences into the living room with people on the other side of the road, on the other side of the block. And what used to be a ditch running down the middle of the road is now a wetland that runs the entire length of the block. So taking taking space in one property and moving it to another and making multiple wetlands instead of having a functional drainage system. Because in my neighborhood, the drainage system worked great for, you know, almost seventy years, and now it doesn't work at all. Properties that haven't flooded in fifty years through multiple hurricanes are now flooding, because there's nowhere for the water to go, and you know, just if you had a topographical map, instead of just a map where it shows just, you know, straight down picture of it, you could actually see where all the water in the neighborhood is going through, and and take take into account that that's, it hasn't been developed for a reason, and if and if you take all the properties you want to put in and all the density you want to put in now, and put it all into that low line area, you have to do something with the water, like.
Yes, sir, and and I would hope that once it gets into the development stage, they pay engineers good money to supposedly design it.
Well, it hasn't worked.
It doesn't always work, I know that, but uh hopefully that's part of that development, so. Anyone else beating a jerk?